Herrera, who's the senior planner. As you can see, there's a lot of people involved off your staff that are working on this particular project. We're looking at tonight, trying to give you an update about where we are. As a legislative body for the city of Federal Way, you're responsible for getting it out in some kind of a timely manner, and that's, of course, always an issue when it comes to comprehensive planning and the related ordinances. It takes time, it takes effort, it takes cooperation. So from our standpoint, that's what we're looking for tonight. We're looking at keeping the council informed on the progress, to where it is right today, identify some of the key topics that will be considered, and general gathering of input and feedback, and question and answering if possible. And, of course, this is always an opportune time for the public to listen and hear what goes on. One of the things that you should be aware of is that when your plans are viewed on behalf of the Growth Management Act by the state, they will be looking at how much public information you've provided to the community, and how is that provided? And our newsletter that's coming out, the brand-new newsletter, is a good example of that, and all the ways that you try to communicate with the public, because it is the public's plan in the long run. So that's what we're looking for, to provide you the kind of information from our presentation this evening, and to stand for questions that you may have from the outset. There is a opportunity here for everyone to be involved, and that includes from the public all the way to the legislature, who will make the final approval. So with that, I'd like to start right now with Margaret, who will go ahead and give you a summary on the comprehensive plan, which is her main responsibility with the department. And then we'll move to Matt with the critical areas ordinance. Thank you.
It worked earlier.
Eric? You mouse? Sorry. Okay. Eric? It's not work?
Is it working up?
It's still not working. You can at least get your presentation going. Use the air.
Just use this, use that?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. No, it's working. Good evening, Mayor Farrell, members of the city council. I apologize for that. I was just a mouse misbehavin'.
Take two.
So this evening, of course, I'm Margaret Clark. I'd like to brief you on the major comprehensive plan update. As you know, the Growth Management Act requires the city to complete a major update to our comp plan by the end of June 2015. Major updates occur every eight years. The purpose of this briefing is to provide information on the requirements of the GMA, provide you with a timeline, let you know where we are in the update process, and share some policy issues with you. The GMA requires that we review our comprehensive plan, revise it if necessary, take legislative action, and that we have an overall public participation plan. What triggers the need for review? We need to review and make changes to comply with statutory amendments since the last major update. Examples of these would be the need to accommodate new housing and employment targets, and then there's new requirements to incorporate information on health and climate change. Also, we would be just doing housekeeping, changes like updating facts, changes in population, another demographic information. So what is the comprehensive plan? The comp plan is our city's vision for how Federal Way should grow over the next 20 years. That would be from 2015 to 2035. The comprehensive plan also responds to the requirements of the GMA. It must be in compliance with GMA. And then we would have goals and policies in our comp plan to guide the city's decisions and actions. The update also needs to be consistent with the Growth Management Act, the Puget Sound Regional Council Vision 2040, and the King County countywide planning policies, which we'll call CPPs. There are 12 chapters in our comp plan. There are seven required elements. You can see them on the left-hand side, the chapters that are required to be addressed in the comprehensive plan, and the city has chosen to also have five discretionary elements. We recently updated our shoreline master program, and we adopted a Twin Lakes Commercial Subarea Plan. So those are very up-to-date, and we're not proposing to make any changes to those plans unless directed by you. So for the calendar year 2014, the plan is to review and revise chapters, hold public workshops, get public input via surveys, and present chapters to the Planning Commission, LUTC, and City Council for an initial briefing, and to get feedback from all three bodies. Next year, between the beginning of the year and June 30 of 2015, we'll make revisions to chapters. The Planning Commission will hold a public hearing. Then their recommendation would go to the LUTC, which would then send on the Planning Commission's recommendation, as amended, to the city council for action. Then the city council would adopt the ordinance, approve the comprehensive plan amendments, and we would need to send the document to the state by the end of June. So what have we done so far this year? We launched a webpage in March. In March, we also had a Planning Commission open house. We had about 20 people, 20 citizens attend the meeting. We had a comp plan survey posted on the comp plan webpage from June 10 of this year through August 8 of this year. We got about 75 citizens filling out that survey, which is a pretty good response for, as far as public participation goes, based on our experience. On July 22, we briefed the Planning Commission on proposed amendments to Chapter 1, which is the introduction, and on August 20, staff from King County Seattle Public Health briefed the Planning Commission on ways to incorporate health into the comp plan update. There are a number of public policy issues that we'd like to touch on this evening: land use, housing, vision for the downtown, economic development, and transportation. Chapter 2 land use includes what's called future land use, and the CPPs, the countywide planning policies, require each jurisdiction to provide enough zoning capacity to accommodate its housing targets. The city must demonstrate adequate capacity to accommodate 8,100 new dwelling units between 2006 and 2031. And each jurisdiction gets targets, and it's based on an agreement between the different cities and King County, and based on a number of other factors. It's quite a complicated process, actually, accommodate, given jurisdictions their targets. Chapter 5 housing addresses affordable housing. The CPPs require jurisdictions to address the following requirements, to address the following countywide need, and this is addressed countywide. 16% of total housing supply must be available for households at the 50% to 80% average median income, which is moderate income. 12% of total housing supply must be available for households at 30% to 50% AMI, which is considered low income, and 12% of total housing supply must be available for households at 30% and below, very low income. And this is not that it has to be provided today. This is, remember, a 20-year plan. And it must be provided countywide, which means not each city would actually have to meet all of these requirements, but we must do our fair share as far as meeting the requirement. Chapter 7, city center, contains a vision for our downtown. The city's downtown are the area zoned city center core and city center frame. Language in the chapter states that the chapter presents concepts and strategies for creating a definable and vibrant city center for Federal Way and an urban center for southwest King County. The goal of the chapter is redevelopment of the city center from low-scale suburbanized commercial area to a full-service, high-density, mixed-use, and more pedestrian-friendly urban core. Chapter 4, economic development, will be updated as part of the major comp plan update. Council will be creating a task force to provide recommendations on what is desired in our downtown and city in the short and long term, and we would like to incorporate the recommendations of the task force into the update. Based on our timeline, staff would like to brief the Planning Commission on Chapter 4 on March 18, 2015, which means as if we're going to brief them on that day, hopefully we would have some sort of recommendations from the task force about a month prior to that time, so we can actually prepare a staff report, get it out, so the Planning Commission and the public can take a look at that draft chapter. Chapter 3, transportation, needs to have some traffic modeling done in order to update it. Modeling is based on projecting new housing units and employment to 2040. We have had difficulty obtaining the data at the level needed for modeling. It took six months to obtain the employment data from Washington State Employment Security Division. In summary, though, we are on schedule at the moment. The schedule is tight with regard to the transportation chapter due to the time required to accurately model existing and future traffic conditions. We will continue to brief the council as we work through the transportation chapter and all of the other chapters. And with that, I'm ending the presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Counsel, do you have any questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have questions.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Sefadah.
When we're talking about employment targets, does that include the minimum wage increase potential or possibility? Would that conversation be a part of that?
For employment targets?
Mm-hmm. Or are we just talking about numbers?
We're just talking about numbers.
Okay. And then the 8,100 new dwelling units, do you know where we are now with that projection?
Yes, I do. Hold on a second. I'm going to get something out of my. Okay, so between 2006 and the end of 2012, we issued 721 units, housing units. I haven't brought it up to today as yet, but as you know, we have a number of units in the pipeline right now. And I've got that information someplace if you'd like it.
Okay, and the target years were 2006 to 2013?
2031.
31.
Yeah. And the reason for that time is because OFM, the Office of Financial Management, did their major projections as of 2006. So King County uses that as a baseline. Right now, we've got in the pipeline 1,289 housing units.
Okay. And then when you're talking about the low-income units, you know, the 12%, 12 and 16, how do we account for people who are overhoused or who are living in those units but can afford to pay higher rates? How do we balance that?
I'm not sure. We haven't gotten there as yet.
Okay. All right. And then one other question would be with transportation chapter. Would that include sound transits proposal and?
Rick will be happy to answer that.
Okay. Thank you.
Excuse me. So when we're looking at the transportation element, we're looking out to 2040, and Puget Sound Regional Council has assumed that the light rail would be completed all the way to Tacoma by 2040, so that will be a base assumption when we're looking that far out.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Maloney.
Thank you. On the affordable housing, are the 12%, 12%, 16%, percentages, are those cumulative or are they inclusive?
They are new. They would have to be the new housing units.
What I mean is, if we have to have 12% of a certain bracket, and another 12%, and another 16%, are they on top of each other? Or, so 12% of the population has to be extremely low income, another 12%, I think it was low income, and then the 16% moderate income?
It would be the housing would have to be affordable to 12%.
Those groups.
Like 12%, 16%, 16. So it's a housing.
So a total of 40%, not one on top of another?
Right.
A total of 16. Okay. Thank you very much.
Right. Deputy Mayor Burbage, and then Councilmember Honda.
Thank you. Margaret, I would appreciate a bit more clarification on the challenge of getting the employment data. I think we've run into this before in trying to access the numbers of employees in our city, partly because sometimes when we're looking at transit needs, we want to know where the transit employment or transit availability needs to be for our employees. And so could you clarify?
I will try, and if not, and if I can't, I'll have Rick add to it. In the past, we've got that information from PSRC, but we have to enter into a confidentiality agreement, because they really don't want people to know where all the employees are exactly. So they do something, I'm not sure what it is. This time, they wouldn't even release it at that level. We had to go to the Employment Security Division. And again, there was a big confidentiality requirement, and it took us quite a while to work through that process.
Thank you. This has been a frustration in my experience, and I think it has to be for other jurisdictions also. And I find it difficult to understand why this needs to be a requirement.
Could I follow up on that?
Deputy Mayor, excuse me, Councilmember Ducllo.
Thanks for the red. Is there a reason why that's treated so confidential by them?
I'm not, I think there must be a reason, but I'm not quite sure what it is.
My understanding of the reason is that this is a result of the Department of Homeland Security, that they do not want it to be public information as to where major employment sites are as a potential security risk.
As if people in the community don't know where they're located.
Yeah. Yeah. From our perspective, it gets to be a little absurd. And yeah, historically, we had to jump through some hoops to get it from PSRC. PSRC could not provide it to the same level of detail that we had previously modeled. So then we had to go direct to the state, and that took a while to get. So it's been very frustrating for us.
Okay. Councilmember Honda.
Almost forgot.
I did? No, I didn't.
Margaret, thanks for the presentation. My question is, you said that we had to have our fair share of low-income housing?
Of all levels of housing.
Is that all?
Well, it's a little complicated, and we're still trying to figure everything out. We've been going to these housing consortiums, and we're all kind of, all the cities, all the jurisdictions are kind of learning on its own together, because in the past, each city did have to have a certain amount. But now, the new countywide planning policy says countywide it must be provided. But the intention is not that it all be concentrated in one area. It should be scattered throughout the county.
So who's going to make sure it's scattered throughout all the county and just not in south King County such as Federal Way or Auburn?
I don't think there's anybody that's going to be doing that. What we'll be doing is we'll be monitoring our progress through the years of what sort of housing we're getting. And I don't think they're going to, I checked with King County, and there's no, there's not going to be any punishment if the city doesn't achieve those goals. It's just that we have to make our best effort. So what we have to make sure is we have goals and policies in the comprehensive plan. We have to have the zoning in place, so that if housing chooses to come here, we can accommodate them.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Maloney, Selzke, and then Ducllo.
Thank you. Just as a side note to this, I know you're talking about King County, but this provides another eye-opener about needing to probably go to the legislature and close some of the loopholes associated with the affordable housing. So I think that should probably be, we've already talked about it possibly being on our legislative agenda, but.
Right. We're actually drafting that now. Thank you. Councilmember Selzke.
Thank you, Mayor. This might be a question for Isaac more so than you, Margaret. So we have a deadline of next June, end of June. I noticed there are a lot of tasks to be done yet, and some of them are tasks that were dependent on others for data. With the time left, we have 10 months roughly. Do we have the staff, and do we have the ability to get everything and get this done and do a good job of it?
Yes. Fair question. We do with regard, the one chapter that we're somewhat concerned about is the transportation chapter, as Margaret mentioned. Like she said, you know, we have a schedule, we can get there. Everything has to go kind of smooth for that to happen with regard to that particular chapter. One comment I'd make is as long as the city is making a good faith effort to meet the update deadline, the state agencies and so forth, they understand that that's not always going to happen. So if, for example, we don't make it there with the transportation chapter, that's not, you know, it's not a, a bolt of lightning is not going to come from the sky and strike us dead. It's just, you know, as long as we're working towards that goal, that should be accepted. But again, our objective is to meet that deadline. Traffic could probably speak a little better to the resources that they need to make that happen. I think with regard to the rest of the chapters, we do have the resources necessary to make that happen.
Okay. All right. I feel better. Thank you.
Councilmember Ducllo.
I was just going to make a comment, that perhaps the Suburban Cities Association might be able to help us get the information, and we could even, you know, make a formal request to them. I'd be happy to bring it to the Policy Issues Committee at the next meeting, if somebody would like.
Yeah, that'd be great. Thank you. Counsel, any other questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now we're ready for Mr. Herrera.
Thank you, Mayor Farrell, Deputy Mayor Burbage, members of the city council. Again, my name's Matt Herrera, and thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight about the critical areas ordinance update. This is a companion piece to the comprehensive plan major update. It follows the same eight-year timeline. Two important pieces of the update are that the update must include a public participation plan, and also the final ordinance must reflect best available science. And I'll explain best available science in a moment, but first I want to identify what GMA, or the Growth Management Act, considers critical areas. And those are wetlands, aquifer recharge areas, fish and wildlife habitat conservation areas, frequently flooded areas, and also geologically hazardous areas. The purpose of the ordinance is to protect the natural environment and also public health and safety, and those protections are provided by using buffers and/or limitations on each of those critical areas, and we do that via the zoning and development code. So some examples of how we protect those areas, with regard to wetlands, we require a buffer on new development of in between 25 and 200 feet, and that's based upon the habitat value and really how that wetland functions. So a higher function in wetland would get a greater buffer. Streams, depending on whether or not, under normal circumstances, they would be salmon-bearing, we would assess a 100-foot buffer. That would be for a salmon-bearing stream. One that would not provide habitat for salmon, we would require a 50-foot buffer. And then a geologically hazardous area, these are landslide hazard areas or steep slopes, we would require a 25-foot buffer from those areas. So when a development application comes in on that site plan, we would require, under the direction of a qualified professional, if there are any critical areas around where new development is going to happen, we require those areas be delineated, and then the appropriate buffer be instituted on that site plan. Now, there is a process in the critical areas code right now, as with all critical areas codes within the state, that allows encroachment. It does require additional permitting. Those additional permits may require a public hearing, and ultimately, a hearing examiner decision to encroach, but any approval would require some kind of mitigation to allow that encroachment. So the Washington State Department of Commerce and also the Department of Ecology reviews the ordinance for compliance with best available science. And best available science is up-to-date information that's already published by state and federal natural resource agencies. We're talking about peer-reviewed journals, and also the expertise of scientific experts. So the Growth Management Act, or the departments that enforce these, the GMA, does not require cities to go ahead and go forth with some formal process to make sure that our ordinance meets best available science. We're looking for science that's already available out there, and then we just bridge that gap to make sure our ordinance meets the BAS requirement. So also along with best available science, that public participation component, really important. So in addition to what we typically do for ordinances, we bring them to the Planning Commission for a public hearing, then we bring them to subcommittees and full council for adoption. We have a public participation program that started with an open house that we had in conjunction with the comprehensive plan back in March. We introduced the subject to the Planning Commission and to the public. We just launched an online survey through the city's website on the critical areas page. Just in a couple of weeks, September 17, we have planned a planning commission update. By then, we're hoping our environmental consultant that is helping us update the critical areas ordinance will have what we call a gap analysis. So what our consultants have done is taken a look at our existing ordinance, compared it to best available science, and they are going to give us a matrix of what those gaps are and solutions to best bridge those gaps. So hopefully, we'll have that in time for the planning commission update. There's a couple of other deliverables we should have in time for that update, so it's an opportunity to show the commission and the public what it is that we are going to have to update. Also, tentatively scheduled for October, we're going to have a public workshop. We'll get folks involved, let them know what it is that we need to update. We'll let folks, we'll likely have a program with breakout sessions, so folks can get into, dig a little deeper into areas they have an interest in. We'll also conduct some focus and stakeholder group interviews, try to get some feedback from folks that have to deal with this ordinance on a daily basis, talking about real estate folks, folks that have critical areas maybe on their properties, homeowner association presidents, those type of folks. And then early next year, we're hoping to have a first draft to present to the planning commission, have a study session of those code amendments that we need to make to bridge that best available science gap. So right now, I can tell you that we'll start drafting the code amendments following the best available science review, and after we have our public workshops and stakeholder interviews, so we have an idea of what it is that we need to update. And we do anticipate the adoption process would begin spring of next year, and on pace for completion prior to that June 30 deadline. That's the end of my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Counsel? Councilmember Honda.
Thank you. You talk about focus groups?
Yes.
How are you getting those groups together?
We have a public participation plan. We identified several groups, folks that we've worked with before, local developers that we've been in contact with, homeowners associations around the lakes in the city, real estate folks. So there's going to be a concerted effort on our part to go out and do the outreach and get those folks to participate.
All right. Thank you.
Counsel? Councilmember, excuse me, Deputy Mayor Burbage and Councilmember Selzke.
Thank you.
I've been working on everybody's names.
Matt, thank you for your presentation. Could you clarify first, though, some of the categories? The, for example, we have a number of lakes, and we have Puget Sound shoreline, and what
Um, also tentatively, tentatively scheduled for October, we're going to have a public workshop. We'll get folks, uh, involved, uh, let them know, uh, what it is that we need to update. Um, we'll let folks, we'll, we'll likely have a program with breakout sessions, so folks can get into, uh, dig a little deeper into areas they have, um, an interest in. We'll also, uh, conduct some focus and stakeholder group interviews, um, try to get some feedback from folks that have to deal with this ordinance on a daily basis, talking about real estate folks, um, folks that have critical areas maybe on their properties, um, homeowner association presidents, um, those type of folks. And then, uh, early next year, we're hoping to have a first draft to present to the planning commission and have a study session of, of those code amendments that we need to, to make to, to, to bridge that best available science gap. So right now, um, I can tell you that, that we'll start drafting the code amendments following the, the best available science review, and after we have our public workshops and stakeholder interviews, so we have an idea of, of what it is that we need to update. And we do anticipate the adoption process would begin spring of next year and, uh, on pace for completion prior to that June 30th deadline. That's the end of my presentation, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, uh, Councilmember Ronda.
Thank you. Uh, you talk about focus groups?
Yes.
How are you getting those groups together?
Uh, we have a public participation plan. We identified several groups, folks that we've worked with before, local developers that we, um, we've been in contact with, homeowners associations around lakes, uh, in the city, uh, real estate folks, so there's going to be a concerted effort on our part to, to go out and do the outreach and, and get those folks to participate.
All right, thank you.
Counsel? Uh, Councilmember, excuse me, Deputy Mayor Burbidge and Councilmember Selsky.
Thank you.
I've been working on everybody's names.
Matt, thank you for your presentation. Uh, could you clarify for us, though, uh, some of the categories? Um, the, for example, we have a number of lakes, and we have Puget Sound shoreline, and what category?
Sure, so, um, there are a number of critical areas or, that are within the shoreline master program overlay, so we're talking about, um, areas within 200 feet of the Puget Sound shoreline, and also areas within 200 feet of Steel Lake, uh, North Lake, and the portion of Lake Kilarney that's in the city's jurisdiction. Those are critical areas that are administered through the shoreline master program, and we will not be updating those, because we updated the shoreline master program a couple of years ago. The courts recently have decided that, um, you can only update critical areas within the shoreline master program when you do that update in itself, and that update requires sign-off by Department of Ecology. So since we've already got that buy-off from Department of Ecology, our scope of work does not include an update to critical areas inside the shoreline master program area, if that makes sense at all. It's, it's very confusing to staff as well. It's something that, uh, the courts made a decision on two years ago, and we're still trying to unwind and understand what it is, but, but the upshot is we will not be updating any critical areas within the shoreline master program, everything outside. So, so lakes, so Easter Lake, we will be up, it will include Easter Lake, uh, Lake Gene, Lake Lorraine, those lakes outside of the shoreline master program, they're smaller than 20 acres. The Critical Areas Ordinance will, will be changed for those areas.
Okay, thank you. I just, another related follow-up, if I may, um, so we're, it will include a focus on those smaller lakes?
Yes.
And, but then the, the salt waterfront?
It will not be updated.
Will not be, because it's, and you said 200 feet, was that 200 feet?
Yes, so the shoreline master program overlay is 200 feet, uh, from the ordinary high-water mark from, from those areas. So, so that's all regulated under the shoreline master program, and part of the master program has its own Critical Areas Ordinance piece connected to it, so it acts as a separate overlay district that we will not be updating as part of this plan.
Okay, thank you very much.
Councilmember Selsky.
Yes, thanks, uh, thanks, Matt. Just a couple of things. I'm, I'm a visual person. Do we have a map, excuse me, or an overlay or something showing the critical areas in the city available at this point?
We do, we, we have a map, um, we have a, uh, actually, we have a, uh, cityafederalway.com backslash Critical Areas. We have a Critical Areas map up, and, um, you're able to see, um, overlays of known wetlands, what we think are wetlands, um, landslide hazard areas, streams, whether or not they're salmonit or, or, or non-salmon-bearing. So yes, we have information. It's by no means precise, though. It's just what we think is already there. What typically happens is when we get a development application for anywhere near one of those areas that we believe that there's a critical area, we require an applicant to go out and have a qualified professional assess the site. If there's not a wetland there, even though we, we show one there, then we'll remove that from the map, and we'll update it as the process, or as, as we get these reports in.
Okay, and you just, I think, hit my second question. I was just going to ask how intrusive this ordinance is for the use of private property?
Well, it does regulate it, just like a regular zoning ordinance would. So, you know, you have your standard setback from the sidewalk, 20 feet, you know, we're impl, we're enforcing setbacks for, for those sensitive areas as well. Um, there are opportunities for folks, um, to get, to get a variance from those, or it's called a, uh, reasonable use exception. So for a subdivision, maybe that was divided 100 years ago before these ordinances were around, um, and say your entire property is encumbered by this, there's a way out, and that's a requirement of the Growth Management Act, to make sure that folks, if they have a legally platted lot, it may be encumbered, but you have to let them build a house if it's, if it's safe to do so.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Councilmember Sephardos.
Thank you. So, um, you talked about encroachment?
Yes.
Allowed? So with geologically hazardous areas, is there allowed encroachment within those areas also?
Yes, there is. So the ordinance allowed, the ordinance requires 25 feet. Um, if you want to encroach closer to that, that would require a geotechnical reconnaissance. They would have to show whether or not that area does meet our definition of a geologically hazardous area. If it does, there's an administrative procedure to allow encroachment into that setback, but, uh, it would require, you know, a geotechnical engineer to show that they could design something that would be safe, and what often happens is they give us the design, and we would send it out to a third party to review. We have third-party environmental consultants that we utilize just to peer review other folks' work to make sure, will this work? Is it going to be safe? Are there downslope concerns? Because it's, you know, it's not only their property, um, it's the folks that live, you know, down, downstream or, or down the hill that we're, we're concerned about, so, yeah, we, we take those, um, like I said, there's, there's an administrative authorization that we would allow it, but we don't have to.
So how are they defined as geologically hazardous, I mean, yeah, areas prior to that study then?
Prior, well, we, we took information originally from, uh, King County, and, uh, what they do is they look at soil conditions, they look at, um, satellite imagery, and they can tell whether or not, you know, a certain slope is at a certain degree, and if the underlying soils are, are hard, and the overlying soils are maybe soft, and it's at a pitch of, you know, 15%, that would qualify for, for a, a landslide hazard area. So what we would do is, and, and that's overlaid on properties within the city, and that, that's when we would require any, you know, special reports when a development application would come through.
Okay, thank you.
Counsel, any other questions? All right, uh, thank you, Mr. Herrera.
Thanks.
Uh, now is the time for council comments or discussion. Counsel, do we have any, uh, discussion on this item? All right, hearing that, we will be in recess for executive session, which is going to RCW 4230-110G, qualifications of an applicant for public employment.